Sarah, how many participants? I'm sorry, go ahead Beth.
And then we'll just come right back to.
To the same one, to the same one, right? How many participants, Sarah?
There's thirty-six in the waiting room.
Okay.
Can I start letting them in?
Yeah, yeah, it's already seven oh one, so.
Bless you, Jamie.
Did he sneeze? Bless you, Jamie. We need all the blessings we can get.
Especially during homeschooling.
Oh, I can't even imagine. That's gotta be really hard. I applaud all the parents that do that. I just can't even imagine.
Yeah, me too.
Is that everyone, Sarah?
And the teachers too, as far as that goes. It's just trying for everybody.
That's everybody.
Okay. Mr. Kimball, we're ready whenever you are, seven oh three, so whenever you are, we're ready.
Call to order, Madison District Public School, December seventh, regular meeting. We do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Pitt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God.
Liberty.
The injustice for all.
All right. Sarah, can we get a roll call attendance, please?
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes, I'm here in Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mrs. Castle.
I'm here, I'm in Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mr. Kimball.
Here, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mrs. that.
I'm present, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mr. Pittman.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Ms. Scott, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mrs. Thompson. I'm here, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Mr. Pittman, we have to start saying our place of location with Zoom. So if you don't mind just saying that for the record.
Here, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
All right, superintendent's report, Mr. Dula.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening, everyone. I asked Sarah Cummings, our school nurse, to take some time to discuss our COVID cases and what's going on with COVID in Oakland County. I'll be sharing my screen, Sarah, if you allow me to share my screen while Sarah shares, Sarah Cummings shares a status of our COVID report. Sarah Cummings, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Let me just try to share my screen.
Can you share it?
I'm trying right now, I'm looking. All right, can everyone see this?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so the cases in the first column, that's from our last board meeting. And then on the right column, those are the latest figures we have from Oakland County Department from last Thursday that those were released. So there's been quite an increase, you can see at the top, their total confirmed improbable cases went from thirty-seven hundred up to ninety-five hundred. Cases a day per million from two sixty-one up to five twenty-five. The fourteen day average daily case count from two seventy up to six eighty. The fourteen day average daily death count from point five down to two point two one. The average tests per day have gone way up from about five thousand up to seven thousand. The percentage of confirmed probable cases that are hospitalized, thankfully, that's gone down to two point zero three to one point two. Percent positivity has gone up quite a bit from eight point five seven to thirteen point three. Healthcare capacity below, it's below capacity, but it's trending up, so the beds are filling up. And you've probably heard today during Governor Whitmer's talk that the healthcare, the hospital CEOs are all, they all asked her to extend because beds are being taken home. We're still in the county level risk of an E. So the total cases by age group went from fifty-eight up to eighty-one for zero to four-year-olds. You can see for all of them, the numbers have gone up, especially the teenagers from two fifty-six up to four thirty-one. The good thing about these numbers, though, the ones from the week before, November eighteenth to twelve-one, those numbers were even higher, so we are coming down, the, everybody staying at home, thankfully, we're seeing those numbers decrease. So even though these numbers are up from where they were last board meeting, they're less than what they were a week ago. So that trend is in the right direction.
And if you, Sarah, can you talk a little bit about what the governor discussed today in her orders?
Yep, so she is going to extend the stay-at-home orders until December twentieth. Everything's gonna stay the same for now, and then they're going to reevaluate on December twentieth. So like one more days.
And they, she also spoke about the Thanksgiving impact, it has not been realized yet.
Yeah, we still have another week to go before we figure out if those numbers are gonna go up from people being together over the Thanksgiving break. Still haven't quite really had enough time yet to see what the impact is gonna be.
Trustees, do you have any questions about this COVID report?
Excuse me, Mr. Dula, this is Beth Scott, I have a question. Can you, is there any way that you can share the governor's executive order in regards to this? Because I know that there was a report about, in her report, she stated the children, some children that could, she felt could go back to school, I wanted to see that report, if possible.
I would, I would have to find, um all I got was, I mean, all I got was an email from K-12, I don't think I got an executive order finalized yet.
Mr. Dula.
Yes.
This is Barbara, I listened to the report, what she spoke about, and I don't have the report, Beth, but I can tell you the gist of what I heard, she spoke about it would be really advantageous, of course, to get the kids back in school as soon as we can, because it's so important for them to get back to their education, but then someone asked, and I think I don't know if it was a reporter, somebody asked about sports and the response from the governor was we've got to get the kids back in the classroom safely. And then after that, sports would come secondary. That the focus would be getting the kids back in the classroom safely, but there was no commitment or no timeline as to when they thought that might happen. And I think she spoke specifically, it was about high school, Beth, as I recall, but I don't have the report, if I can find it, I'll send it to you.
I have it, I see it, it's extensive, but I could talk about.
If you could just, Mr. Dula, excuse me, you could just share that portion about K through eighth grade, I think it was.
So that was section five, it says schools, actually, let me share my screen and then I'll be happy to read it too while I'm sharing my screen.
Thank you.
Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, so again, this is from the gathering, this is the Michigan.gov website. If you scroll down here to section five, under subsection five hundred ten A, schools, colleges, technical schools, universities, gathering at public and non-public schools for the purposes of conducting in-person instruction, sports, extracurricular activities. Let me just close this part. Activities serving pupils in grades nine through twelve are prohibited. So she's saying in-person instruction, sports, and extracurricular activities in grades nine through twelve are prohibited. Except for in-person instruction of pupils who are English language learners or participants in special education services, or as provided in section five D and five G. Is that the specific portion you want me to speak to, Beth, or would you like me to read?
It was the, it was the, what she had stated about the K through eighth grade.
Okay. Gathering, I don't see that in here.
I don't recall that being talked about today.
I didn't see, I didn't see K, A, I don't think she's, let me see, oh, right here, right here. Under B, gathering at public and non-public schools for the purposes of conducting in-person instruction of pupils in pre-kindergarten, which is our GSRP. Right. Eight are permitted, subject to local health department and school district decisions on remote learning. Gatherings for the purposes of sports and extracurricular activities are prohibited.
Thank you.
Yep, and that, this is why we have to every month visit our our, our remote learning. Again, we're still in the E. But in grades K through, pre-K through A, she is allowing some flexibility. And if you see in the agenda, I am seeking some flexibility in our ECSC program at this time, but you'll see that later on in the agenda.
But nothing through K through eight, correct?
ECSC is before pre-K, but yeah, at this point, given that we have ten, ten days before we go on, on winter break, it is really not conducive to return to, to learn for ten days, parents do need to prepare for returning in person, and right now, given that we go on, on winter break on December eighteenth, it's really not conducive for grades GSRP, which is pre-K to grades eight. But it is permissible, it is allowed if the board does take action on that. Any other questions regarding COVID report with Sarah Cummings? All right, next, I have a care presentation that I would like to share, this is something that we are implementing in our district, and this is new, so I'd like to share this with the board. Can you see this? PowerPoint slide, are you able to see this?
Yes.
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 So this program is called CARE. It's work-life solutions, it's an employee assistance program, it's also a crisis intervention program, and also deals with social emotional support for employees. If you recall, either last year or the year before, where Fitzgerald had that crisis with that student assault that occurred in school, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
It was a murder.
Okay, so CARE was called into the scene to provide students with crisis support. This is the same program, but this also helps employees, so I'm, just want to go through this employee assistance program, and I do want to give credit to Jamie Thiel for introducing this, this is, uh he brought this to my attention regarding this employee assistance. So EAP is not only for our employees, but also our students when we have a crisis, but also the dependence of our employees. It's a confidential employee resource, problem-solving counseling sessions, guidance and goal-setting for individuals. It's convenient. It's absolutely free, anytime an employee needs to access this for addiction, crisis, social-emotional behaviors. It's absolutely free and confidential. This is a little bit about their numbers, it was founded in nineteen seventy-seven. How many, how many people they serve annually, it is a nonprofit, so it's a very minimal cost to us. And it is a licensed program by the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, it's also known as LAURA. It also deals with substance abuse treatments and services. It is certified employees, assistance professional and substance abuse professionals are on staff. They have a twenty-four hour hotline support by, by care staff. And it talks about prevention. It talks about a crisis that occurs, if we have a crisis in the district, and it also talks about resolutions, ways to remedy the situation. This is a little bit of their programs, they utilize in review reports, they provide technical assistance for us. They also provide referrals, if they themselves cannot help the individual employee or the family member, they do provide support. And they have training and development, hypothetically, if we have some employees that need certain training, it is a no-cost recommendation to the district. So hypothetically, if we have an employee that is hypothetically needs assistance with substance abuse, then we could provide this resource to them at no cost to the employee or their family members. We, we are also able to provide referrals. If we see, or if we identify an employee that might have a pattern that might need some assistance, we could also make a referral to CARE, and it's completely confidential. This is not punitive, this is not, you got in trouble and you need assistance, this is, how can we help you get through this crisis that you have in your life? We see a huge increase in, in, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, you'll see it reports. Substance abuse is on the rise, social-emotional behaviors and concerns, suicide is on the rise, this is a way to deal with this. We don't claim that we'll have all the answers, but we're trying to provide as many resources and services to employees and their family members during this pandemic as possible. Again, we talked about crisis, whether it's the loss of a loved one. Right now, if, if we have a student or employee who loses someone to COVID nineteen, we are not the professionals, but we can in turn refer them to professionals to help them get through this. It's a simple form that we filed, this is just a sample of the form. And Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, the cost to the district for the whole district is twenty-five hundred dollars, is that correct, Jamie?
Um, it's twenty-eight hundred, then they prorated the month of November, so it's around like twenty-six hundred for this year.
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So twenty-six hundred dollars for the year to provide this, this support system for the entire district and their dependents. This is new. We think is needed, and, and we really think that it would be welcome, it's just another support system that we could provide during this pandemic for families. Again, they specialize in crisis support, again, like Fitzgerald had the crisis, they had people on the scene within hours. So God forbid, there is a crisis, then we have a support system in place, ready to roll out. This is a little bit about their website. Just, just some screenshots of, of logins and some of the other support systems. Trustees, do you have any questions for us regarding this program?
No. Mr. Dula, this is Beth Scott, I do, do we have this for the families and students?
So we do have it for students with a crisis, if there is a, if there is a crisis, we absolutely have that in place.
Is that CARE as well?
Yeah. Oh, actually, for the CARE, I believe, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, the CARE is for the employees and their dependents. The crisis is for the entire district, correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right. Does that answer your question, Beth?
Yeah.
Okay. It's just another to, to be honest, whether people believe in this COVID pandemic or not, it is a serious serious pandemic, it is really scary, and it really is impacting families. It's impacting, impacting them economically, socially, emotionally, academically, and we are just trying to stop the loss. And we don't claim that we have all the answers, but we're trying to put as many things in place to help families get through this pandemic. Again, credit goes to, for, to Jamie on this, this is, I really liked it when, when he pitched that idea. I think the more programs that we have to provide support for families, the better off we are.
All right, before we conclude with that, let's move to public fundamentals, comments. Sarah, how many?
Mr. Kimball, I still have, I still have one more piece from my superintendent's report.
All right, go ahead.
A few months ago, we talked about air quality, I had to dress some mold at the high school. We did some extensive testing, I want to share the summary report of that. We already started remediation, the damage was not as bad as we thought initially. But we had a IAQ do an assessment, so I would like to share the screen with that. Just to talk about again, this is from IAQ. This is what they're recommending to us. Fungal air test results identified no less than minor fungal elevation in room H one oh five. Room H one oh five was a room that was transformed into an office area when Keys Grace Academy was at the high school. This was additions added to the high school when Keys moved in. That is their major concern there, so it said after containing the work area, the following should be removed, and he prioritized them for us. Remove all water damaged ceiling tiles in room H one oh five. Walls, remove all walls from two inches in height. So what we're doing is we're removing all the walls. Flooring, remove the laminated floor tiles at the northwest quadrant of the room and detach the base cabinets, again, this room has never been occupied by students. This was an office area by Keys Grace Academy, and since they moved out, it's been a storage room for us. Next area of concern is room C one oh three. The ceiling, remove the deteriorated portion of the gypsum roof decking located along the east side wall. If removal of the roof decking is not immediately possible, then use HEPA vacuum to the affected material and remove the I don't even know how to say those, silic surface material. And then remove the east side quarter of the south wall. In the boiler room area, remove the deteriorated portion of the gypsum roofing decking located in multiple locations. If removal of the roof decking is not immediately possible, then use HEPA vacuum to the affected material and remove this silic surface material. Next would be room A one oh one, that is by the band room and music room. There's plaster that is a lower ceiling plaster, they're recommending that we remove that plaster, cut it all out, remove it and repaint it, and then there's a carpet area in the band room that they're also asking us to remove. They also said that there is the acceptable air quality, there's no concerns with air quality, so our initial assessment black mold, I, I, I think maybe they, that was an overreach, but we are working on all the recommendations, we will provide the board with all the results, once we, not the results, but the completed work once is done, we already started the work on, on remediation. Any questions here, trustees?
I do, Mr. Dula, this is Beth Scott.
Yes.
Last month, I asked that you send us a copy of that report. Will you send a copy of that report to the board members, please?
I already sent the copy of the IAQ report, but I will send it again, I sent it, I already sent it once, but I will be happy to send it again.
What date was that that you sent, do you recall?
I would have to look, I think it was in my weekly update, but I will be happy to send it again.
Okay, it would be the actual report from the company?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, that is, that is it for my report.
Okay, thank you, let's move to public fundamentals with public comments, Sarah, how many people do we have?
Everyone at the moment, Mr. Tom Smith.
All right, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
I'm Tom Smith. I understand that the 2020 financial statements will show an improvement in the district's fund balance. I want to commend the majority of the board and the administration who have worked together to promote good fiscal practices and responsibility in managing the district's resources. I think you've set an improved standard that can be built on to serve the community now and in the future. Extra kudos too for working through the additional challenges brought by COVID nineteen. I'd like to thank a couple of the outgoing trustees for your service. You know who you are. I've seen you take on financial problems and work with the board majority to make necessary changes that have improved the district. You've done this in spite of disruptions and challenges from certain trustees and members of the public. You leave the district in much better shape than when you got here. These jobs are challenging and substantial commitment. You've done them, you've done them well. Thanks again. That's all I have, thanks for your.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. If that's it, let's move on to the Board of Education.
There's another one, Mr. Beaver.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Beaver.
Good evening. I just wanted to say give a huge shout out to our district teachers and staff. Although being virtual isn't ideal, and it's not what anyone wanted or wants right now, but it has done extremely well for my family. When schools closed in March, our biggest fear with our kids was that they would fall behind academically. But we just finished up the first quarter, and all of my kids made the honor roll. I even have one that made National Honor Society at the high school. I even have one that made National Honor Society at the high school. Not only did they do amazing on the report cards, but they also scored above average on their NWEAs and beginning of the year assessments. Not only do I come from a big family, but I have a big family. My nephew, I have a nephew that's in Madison District, but we have nieces and nephews spread out across everywhere in Utica, Rochester, Warren, Madison Heights. And our district has done a great job in our virtual learning. I know that I've had my sister-in-law and brother-in-law have had to pull their kids from their school because of lack of support on the virtual side. Teachers aren't available to take questions. So they've actually had to pull their kids to homeschool them and our teachers have done a phenomenal job of, as, as being there. I, I appreciate all of the, the collaboration between the admins, having the virtual schedule pretty much being identical at all three grade levels. You know, elementary, high school, middle school has been huge. When we've got five students that are all on the same schedule, it makes it great to try to keep them on pace at home. So thank you, teachers, admin and staff for your hard work and diligence and keeping this thing flowing as smoothly as you possibly can. It, it has made it, it's made it nice with the situation that nobody wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaver. And does that conclude it, Sarah? Do we have anyone else?
There's no more at the moment.
All right, then let's move on to Board of Education action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed minutes from the 11/9/2020 regular board meeting. Does someone have this motion?
Mr. President, I'll take the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Ah, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I have a question. I'll be abstaining from this because I wasn't at this meeting. But I'd like to ask Mr. Abdullah Hyde. Mr. Abdullah, the November meeting is not posted online.
The minutes are, the minutes are posted online.
The video.
Right, the video is not posted online, okay. Noted.
Were you, were you aware of that?
Yes, I was.
Okay, is there a reason why it didn't go up yet?
No, there's no reason. I'm sure we'll have it up.
Okay, because I would have loved to have watched the video of the meeting since I had to miss it.
We did put the, we did put the unofficial minutes up, so you could also reference the minutes.
I did, but the video would have been a little bit more helpful, especially to families that look forward to that, the ones that are currently working. But is there a protocol in place? Like how many days will it take to get, for the meetings, to get the videos to get posted online? Is there a protocol that we have?
So, so legally, we don't have to post, post the videos online, just to be clear, correct? Do you agree with that?
I agree with that, but.
And we, we have, we have the minutes up and we follow protocols there. And again, I, I would, I would recommend to this board that if you want certain protocols in place, that you take action on those protocols and then we would adhere to those actions.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right, anybody else? Now, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
I'm abstaining.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, the next item is revisit the COVID-19 learning plan. Recommended that the Board of Education continue remote learning for all students through the end of the first semester, January 29, 2021, and authorize Mr. Abdullah Hyde the flexibility to introduce hybrid learning for our ECSE students. Does someone have that motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Holcomb, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle. Discussion. Anybody? No. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
No.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, next item is Delta Network Switches. Recommended that the Board of Education approve the additional cost to complete the upgrade and remainder of the old switches as well as add additional wireless access points. Does someone have this motion? Or do we need some definition of this from Mr. Abdullah?
This is just to complete our, our network upgrade. If you're aware that we took action on, on this, moving to fiber one, our switches need upgrading. We do get E-rate reimbursements on this, but we do have to get board approval, anything over $10,000. So this is why we're presenting this to the board.
Okay. Any other discussion? No, roll call vote, please.
Nobody took the motion.
You need to make a motion.
I did make the motion. Someone's got to take the motion. Someone will take this motion.
I'll take the motion.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Scott.
I'll take the motion, this is Bascot.
All right, anyone second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ah. Now discussion. I will say that this is crucial with the fiber optic network we have now and switches wear out over time. And the more remote access is going to get better coverage to the building. So I think this is an absolutely must that we have to do, especially with the reimbursement we get. Uh, anybody else? No, okay, roll call vote now.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, the next item is it's recommended the Board of Education approve the purchase of the pre-bidet items to replace equipment at the high school for $20,988, $20,988. Will someone take this motion?
I'll take the motion, this is Bascot.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle. Discussion.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did, did, did Cat go for this, this grant for the?
Yeah, she, yeah, she, she applied for it and she was awarded $25,000. But again, we're, we're presenting it because those are the protocols. And so we are just presenting everything that we're doing to this board to take action on. Although we did get the grant, we are just seeking your approval.
And this is no to the district.
That is correct.
All right, that answered my question as well. Any other discussion? Okay, can we move to a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Next item is recommended the Board of Education approve the employment agreement for Dr. Hill as presented in the patch. Will someone take this motion? All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Castle. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Pittman.
So I believe that Ms. Trustee Scott requested a copy of Ms. or Dr. Hill's current contract. The last one I have is from when she was first hired. So is, is she still under, is the contract still current or still, what is the, when does her current contract end?
Her current contract has ended and she's operating without a contract and we're presenting a new contract to this board.
Okay, is there a reason that we, we didn't get? When, you know, like I said, Ms. Trustee Scott requested a, a copy of her contract and you never, there was no reply.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a request from Ms. Scott requesting Dr. Hill's employment contract. I've been, I've been responding to emails.
But I disagree.
I believe you have a copy of the contract, correct, Mr. Pittman? Because you did forward it to the Treasury Department. So I believe you do have.
No, I did not forward it to the Treasury Department.
Oh, okay. We, I don't have.
I have, I have one from the previous year. I just.
Yeah, that's the only contract I have.
That's the only contract we got, Mr. Pittman, for Dr. Hill. The only one is when we initially hired her. She's not had another contract.
So why, why couldn't you respond to the email from Trustee Scott that you don't, there isn't one?
When did she email me?
All right, I, I will look it up.
Beth, can you tell me when you?
She can tell you, yeah.
Well, okay, so I don't have my email on, on my computer, the school email. But I did, Mr. Abdullah had sent you an email the day that you sent out the board about the board packets, I believe. I think it was December 3rd or December 4th, but I also blind copied Mr. Pittman.
Okay, I am looking at your December 3rd email and you are requesting CNG information.
It's on there.
Keep reading the last sentence.
Oh, okay, I, I, you're right. You, you are right. I did not see that. Please cut, provide a cur, I did not see that. I apologize, Mr. Pittman, I did not see that. Because I did provide all the other information. You are correct, Mr. Pittman. I apologize for that. I did not see that at the bottom, Ms. Scott. But you do have it now, you do have the current, the, the new proposal in front of you, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize.
I wanted to see the old, I wanted to see her other contracts. And I don't know to what details we can discuss this in open session. Can we discuss this contract in open session?
Only, only with permission of Dr. Hill and she's shaking her head no. So therefore you cannot discuss this in open session.
Okay, I would, I would like to add that when her contract was first approved, it was in the board package that I believe you have access to board books, that this could have been looked up as well.
Well, yeah, but we did not know that she didn't have a new contract because this one ended in June.
Right. That, that we voted on an extension of the contract though.
Right.
Prior to June.
If, if you would have had a new contract, it would have to be presented to you. And we've never presented a new contract to this board or a contract renewal. So we were still operating under the old one. And I, and I do want to say I, I'm very pleased with the performance of Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
And so she has my full confidence.
Okay, anything else? No. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman.
No.
Ms. Scott.
No.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, next item is the human resources. It is recommended Board of Education approve the layoff, the sports staff employees outlined in the administrative comments above in the attached resolution. Does someone have this motion?
I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Second.
Oh, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ah. Discussion. I think this has to do with the COVID.
We just have some idle, yeah, we just have some idle employees now that the board took action last month, that's all.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, could you, could you read the motion or the, the action requested one more time, the motion?
The motion is, is recommended Board of Education approve the layoff of the sports staff employees outlined in the administrative comments above in the attached resolution. We have Terry Field, the bus driver, Derek Glenn, bus driver, Tamara Hicks, bus driver, Kathleen Segal, food service, and Sharon Black, paraprofessional.
Mr. Mr. President, so these are idle employees? If I, I guess I should ask Mr. Abdullah Hyde?
Correct, correct, I believe they were idle employees due to remote learning, going back to remote learning. Mr. Abdullah, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah, correct. And, and with transportation, we did attempt to offer some and some did accept, Mr. Pittman, to do meal deliveries using transportation. We were just trying to provide as much, you know, hours for employees. So some did accept, some we couldn't provide hours for and some declined. So we, we are required to present that list to you and that's what you have in front of you.
So our school nurse is on a contract? Is, what, what exactly does her day consist of now without student?
So, well, for example, we had a situation that required our school nurse to respond. Just because we are remote does not mean we don't have employees or families that are reporting situations to us. And we also do our, our COVID reports to the board every, every month. And so although we might be remote, and it's crucial that we have a school nurse on staff, Mr. Pittman, especially in the middle of a pandemic.
Right, we have staff.
I'm just asking.
All right. So here's an example, we had a employee notify us today. Either, I, I believe that was today, right, Jamie? We, we needed guidance, we needed medical guidance. We are not the medical experts. And so we actually, Mr. Pittman, just, just for the record, she was actually willing to take a, a layoff. But we requested that she remain on, on, on staff because we needed her. So this is not like she's idle. We, we, we have a need for medical professionals, especially during a pandemic.
All right, is there anything else? No, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Ms. Castle.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ah.
Yes.
Mr. Kimball.
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right, next item is recommended that the Board of Education accept the personal report for Madison District Public Schools as presented. Would appear that there is no action items on the resolution. Does someone take this motion, please?
I'll take the motion. Chair, if you could also read, read the the assignments. The list, yes, please.
There, there, there is no. Blank.
You should have a list.
There is. There is a new.
I'm looking right at the personal report as presented. There's nothing.
Page, Mr. Kimball.
Yeah, go to the next.
Second, there's a second page, Mr. Kimball.
My second page goes to the check register.
It, the second page, I believe talks about the promotions, right? That, that you, you don't have the HR report?
Missing.
Mr. Abdullah, if I, if I may, the first page, which you're, I think you're referring to, has the new hire of Emily Byrne, an early on coordinator. And then it goes to the promotions and reassignments on the second page, which is Stacy, Stacy Colley.
This is missing from my.
Okay. Well, Mr. It, would you allow Mr. Pittman to just name them off because right there?
Absolutely, if you guys don't mind, sure.
It's page 32 and page 33. So 33 has the Emily Byrne, early on coordinator at the Early Childhood Center. Page 34 has Stacy Colley, promotion from Dean of Students to Assistant Principal at Madison High School. Felicia Hemingway, promotion from Dean of Students to Assistant Principal at Madison Elementary. And then the four that were mentioned earlier, the. two, uh, oh, I'm sorry, five, three bus drivers, a food service, and a paraprofessional.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pitt. I jumped from page thirty-two to thirty-five.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we go any further, um, Ms. Mrs. Scott took the motion. Who, who seconded that motion?
No, no one, no one seconded yet. Can we get a second?
I'll make it. I'll take the second.
All right, Castle, thank you. Now discussion.
I just thought I overlooked it. Sorry, thank you.
Anybody?
So it, I just have one question regarding the promotions from Dean of Students to Assistant Principal. And I have no issue with that. I'm just curious if we will be refilling the Dean of Students position, or if that's going away. And we're just going to have an assistant principal.
You are, you are correct. We are not looking to refill those positions at all.
Okay, all right.
I have a question. I, I do have some questions.
All right, Ms. Scott, do you have a four? Go ahead.
Okay, um, so do they currently have contracts right now that are expiring?
No, they're in the collective bargaining agreement that you ratified, um, last month.
Okay, so there's no, there's going to be no pay raise involved or no?
That, that's not what I said. I, I said there's no individual contracts. They're in a CBA, collective bargain agreement. So in the collective bargain agreement, there are pay increases and step increases and benefits of that nature. So, yeah, I'm, as they're moving from one role to another, there is a pay increase, but it's already ratified by the Board of Education and it was done the last, the month of November.
Okay, so my next question is, um, why, why would we be making this change now when students aren't in the building? Why, why is it necessary to make this change right at this moment?
I, I honestly think it, working with them, Ms. Scott, if you see the amount of work that it takes, both ladies have sacrificed the entire summer to work alongside. This whole remote learning, I just want to be clear, this, this didn't just come about just on a whim. We spent months on preparation and, and, and some trustee elects were on, on that committee. You were on that committee with me. We spent hundreds of hours in preparation. They sacrificed months and months of time to ensure that, you, you heard it from a parent, that we are, we are in a good place in our remote learning for families. We've, we've not gotten a lot of negative feedback on our remote learning plan. Well, this is what, this wasn't just me just coming up with something. This was a collaborative effort. I absolutely believe and stand behind the promotion of Stacy and Felicia. They are, um, I, I really think that we are, we are lucky to have them. I'll just say that. We are lucky to have them. They're not lucky to have us. We are lucky to employ these two individuals. And I couldn't stand behind and not promote, right? We, we believe in promoting within. Right? Everything that we preach is about family unity, and we promote from within. And so to me, the pandemic and, and how they're handling this pandemic is bar none the best. And I stand behind that, um, recommendation.
All right, anyone else? Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, now we move to the business office. It is recommended the Board of Education approves the monthly expenditures totaling one million fifty-one thousand, six hundred, three dollars, thirty-seven cents. Will someone take that motion, please?
I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
I'll take the second motion.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. Discussion.
I have a question. Mr. Abdullah had, I do know that you responded to me in this email in regards to the CNG. Um, there's two, two, I, well, there's I think six items on this, uh, check registry. Um, and Mr. Abdullah had did answer it. I had questioned why, um, we were paying invoices for CNG from July and August, and then also Clark Hill from August. And, um, Mr. Abdullah had did reply back saying that we now have, um, Ms. Joanne Colbacher, paying the bills. So.
Accounts payable, running, doing the, yeah.
So Joanne Colbacher is the accounts payable?
She's, she's, she's taken on that role, yeah. She's, she's, she's absorbed that, some of those responsibilities.
Okay, so we, going, going, um, forward, we should not see any invoices that would be from August or July that far back.
Right.
Unless there was a question, unless it was a question.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Gloria, uh, would you agree with that since that?
Yes, I, that was a conversation I've already had.
Okay, I, I thought you may have.
Why were we picking them so late?
Okay, so that, that, I just wanted to make sure going forward that we would, and I figured Gloria had, had that conversation with somebody. But I wanted to make sure that we now pinpointed that Joanne is now the accounts payable person, and she would be the one that would be paying the bills in a timely manner.
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
All right, anyone else? No? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, next item. You can make a motion to go into closed session for the superintendent's evaluation. Will someone take that motion?
Under, under eight A of the Open Meetings Act, Mr. Um.
Under eight A of the Open Meetings Act.
I'll, I'll take the motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Ah. Discussion.
Mr. President? I'm sorry, uh, I just wanted to ask about sec-, uh, section seven here on the agenda where it says attorney-client privileged information, eight, H of the OMA, what is, is that going?
I'll be, I'll be withdrawing that, Mr. Pittman. I'll be withdrawing that. I'm going to withdraw that from the agenda. Uh, Mr. Kimball, also, if you could just let the public know that when we move to closed session, this meeting is going to continue. So let them just be there because I mean, this meeting is going to stay here while we move to closed session.
All right.
Okay, and I just, I, okay, so we're going into closed session, um, to discuss this. When we come out of closed session, are we limited to, are we going to be discussing?
You're, you're, legally, you're not allowed to discuss my performance outside closed session, which I, I requested, Ms. Scott.
Okay, so any of our notes or anything like that, those?
They'll, they'll be shared in closed session with me. And if you have concerns about my performance, that will be the time to discuss that.
Okay.
So, um, we just stay put right here and?
No, no, I already sent you the email on the closed session. And if you want to, um, take a restroom break before, you haven't taken action on, on, on moving to closed session yet. But as we do, if you want to take time to go to the restroom quickly and then join the closed session, that would be the perfect time to do that as well.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no more discussion, we just need to vote to go into closed session. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, I sent you the email, trustees, so check your emails and then join me in that Zoom meeting.
Yep. The back in session is of nine twenty-five. And I need to announce the superintendent's evaluation is highly effective. A consensus of the board.
You, you have to make a.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the overall rating of highly effective for Mr. Abdullah had's evaluation.
All right.
I'll second Gloria. I'll second your motion, Gloria.
Ms. Castle, thank you. Discussion. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Pittman?
Going to abstain.
Motion carries five to one.
I believe in this abstain is, won't you count the ball? No, okay, sorry.
Mrs. Thompson, is there another motion you want to make?
Yeah, I thought we were going to remove number seven, though, attorney-client privilege.
We, we, we haven't gone to that.
We haven't got to that.
I'm going to make another amend. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda pursuant to section nine of the superintendent's extension of contract.
All right.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Thompson, can you repeat that?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda pursuant to section nine of the superintendent's extension of contract.
I'll second it.
All right, discussion.
Um, when did this get added to the, to the agenda?
She's added right now. She's amending.
I'm amending.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You, you are approving this addition? To the addition to the agenda?
We're voting on amending the agenda right now.
Okay, I mean, well, I, I just know in the past, we, you haven't even allowed it to be voted on.
No, everybody can make, uh, a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, all right.
Put it down in the past. Yeah, shake your head. All right. Uh, no discussion, then we vote. Roll call vote on amending the agenda for purposes of, of superintendent's contract.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Now, this is for adding it. This isn't for voting on the contract?
Now, this is for amending the agenda.
Okay. No.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ah?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, what motion would like you, would you like to add to the agenda, Mrs. Thompson?
She just.
To extend the contract? Is that what we're doing now?
You, you wanted to add the motion. You don't even know what you want to add?
Excuse me, Mr. Pittman.
It's a joke.
You're out of order. You're out of order. You're a joke.
You're out of order, Board President.
No.
No.
So what exactly is the motion to add or to approve the addendum to his contract extending the term?
Correct. To extend. I have, I have a comment. This, this, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The reason that the, uh, motion was made is because we couldn't extend his contract until after his evaluation.
That is in the contract that we, uh, review and possibly extend his contract at the conclusion of his.
Evaluation.
Evaluation, yes.
Mr. President, Mr. President? If we, if we refuse or don't, do not take action on this, we're in breach of his contract.
Correct.
You can do it probably last time. I think it, because we just.
That was overlooked. That was an error last time, yes.
Well, maybe because we didn't have the proper training or the knowledge that we have now. But if we don't take action on this particular item that Gloria brought to the table, then we're breaching his contract.
Correct.
Correct. The extension, uh, starts at the original term, same pay, extends to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five.
Has anyone seconded the motion? If not, I will.
Did we have a motion yet?
Yes, Gloria just.
Gloria made the, Gloria made the motion.
You made the motion and she said yes.
It was, she made a motion to put the change in the agenda. Now we go down in his track.
Sarah, did anyone second that motion?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Ah just did.
All right, discussion then.
Okay, I, I have not seen the new contract. When, when did we get?
It was emailed to you this afternoon, this evening.
What time? What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty?
Okay, so five thirty, and I'm expected to get this contract, look over this contract?
The contract, Ms. Scott, has not changed. This is just an addendum on.
Correct.
The terms of the contract have not.
Mr. Abdullah had, hold on a second. Could I not have comments from other board members until I grasp my head around this? Okay, so this was, this contract was emailed to us at what time, five thirty?
About five thirty.
Correct.
Okay, five thirty. So we're supposed to absorb this information before this meeting?
Well, it's a one-page addendum. One page.
And who, when did we find out that we were in breach of his contract? When did we find this out?
I don't understand your question.
So we're, we're making, we're, Ms. Castle said that we're breaching his contract because if we don't do something about his contract now, we're in breach of it. When?
Beth, I can, Beth, Beth, I called Mr. Abdullah had and asked him what would happen if we took no action on this. I wanted to be prepared to know what my responsibility was on this item. So I asked him. He told me no action would equal a breach of his contract. And when this brought to my attention, did not do that last year.
Okay, when, when did, when did you, when did you bring this to, to Mr. Abdullah had's attention?
Today, I called him. I have a question, which any one of you board members can do at any time. You have a question about an item.
Hit me out of here.
And get an answer. And that's what I took upon myself to do.
Mrs. Thompson, you have a four.
Mr. Abdullah had, am I correct in saying that we had until December twentieth to take action on this, or we were in breach?
So, yeah, it's, it's a regular board meeting. So the only regular board meeting in December is this one. The one on the fourteenth is a, is a special board meeting for the audit report.
Correct. Okay. We have to.
Last year, I will say this, last year you did breach my contract. And, and I could have brought on legal action, but legal action would have cost the district money. And so I chose not to take action on that because we're basically hurting ourselves. And so I chose not to take action on. And if you don't take action again, you would be in breach again of my contract.
Mr. Abdullah had, excuse me, this is Beth. Um, did you bring that to the board?
I emailed, I emailed Board President this summer, but again.
And Board President didn't inform the board?
Uh, because I chose not to take action, but I did notify him and say, hey, but I, I chose not to take legal action because it would have cost us money. So I let it be.
My point is, is that this board is uninformed.
No, I, I think this board is informed. I just chose not to take action on it because I didn't want to hurt the district.
Well, uh, Ms. Scott, would you like us to take a few minutes while you read the one page?
No, I think, no, I would like to, I would like to add this and have a special meeting on this alone. That's why I would like.
We can't.
We have until December twentieth, Ms. Thompson just said.
Has to be at a regular board meeting.
Has to be a regular board meeting, according to his contract.
So if Mr. Abdullah had knew this in the summertime, why wouldn't we have done it previous to December?
Because it's all.
Not due till December.
You, you, you do the, it says on section nine of my contract, is the board has, shall take action on the extension of the superintendent's contract. So in December, you're supposed to take action on official action. You actually have to take a vote on my extension. If you don't, then you breach my contract. And so my legal remedies would be to take legal action against the district, which would hurt the district. So I'm caught between a rock and a hard place. Do I think about myself? So I'm caught between a rock and a hard place, do I think about myself and take, hurt the district, or do I let things just go? And so I chose just to let things go. And, and so here we are again, but at one point, you can't just continue to let things go, Ms. Scott. You, you have to under a contract.
You're right, I would have liked to have this been brought to the board in October or November at the regular board meeting, I would have liked to have had days to look over the contract, whether it be one page or not.
It's not a contract, one page.
Mr. President?
Whether, can I finish, may I finish, may I finish what I was going to say to Mr. Abdullah? I would have liked to have had the time to look at the addendum of this, I would have liked to have, this have been done prior to a few days and no regular board meeting was gonna happen, is my point.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Thompson, go ahead.
Can I just point out that we're not changing his contract, we're not giving him a raise? Everything that was put in his contract stays, all this is, is an extension of his contract.
Correct.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pittman?
Would Mr. Abdullah Had have an issue with reading section nine of his contract?
I'll be happy to read it.
Out loud.
Okay, yeah, I mean, he's gonna read it.
What purpose would it be to read?
I'm looking for it right now.
One question, Mr. Abdullah Had, would this change your evaluation date for next year?
No, the, nothing is changing in this contract. My salary is staying the same, the benefits stays the same, the.
Could we change your evaluation date? Um, as I emailed you, could we change it?
You cannot, you cannot bargain with me in public, it's against the law, you would have to bargain with me in close session.
Understandable.
Yep.
You're gonna read this section nine, Mr. Abdullah?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, I'm looking right now. Okay, section nine states, "The superintendent shall be evaluated in December regular board meeting of each year during the terms of this agreement, failure to take action within the indicated timeline shall result in a highly effective rating. The current evaluation instrument approved by the Board of Education is one developed by the law firm Collins and Blaha. Upon completion of a formal evaluation, the board shall consider a one-year renewal or extension and take formal action on, on the, on the agenda." Now, part of that, if you think about that, if the board takes no action, I get a highly effective, but I've been pursuing this board to give me a rating and to get feedback. I was, I wasn't trying to hide anything, I wanted the feedback. And so failure for the board to take action would automatically give me a highly effective, yet I didn't choose to follow that, I chose to pursue that and get feedback from this board so I could improve.
When, when does that contract end?
Uh, twenty twenty, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
And what is the amendment that we're voting on?
Twenty-five.
So it says we, we, that section nine didn't say one year?
Yeah, but you breached last year's, and one year is just the minimum, you could, you could negotiate with me longer, period.
We can, yeah, but you, so I just, just so everyone knows, we don't have to do three years.
Right, we don't, you're right.
But we choose.
We owe him two years.
We choose to paint our superintendent over him interviewing someone else, again, so.
Is there, is there, if I can, maybe someone knows, is there, I think there's a limit on how long of a contract you can have with the superintendent.
It's five years, we're well below that threshold, Mr. Pittman, okay.
Five years. All right, any other discussion?
I feel that the three-year, the period, the extension we're giving him, I feel like we want to keep him on board, he's done an exceptional job, I don't want to lose him to another district, that's my personal opinion.
Well.
I agree with that superintendent shortage. We would be worse off if we, definitely.
Mr. President, if I may, that, this does not stop him from, him from leaving.
I don't want to leave.
I know, but it doesn't stop you.
It doesn't stop, but twenty twenty-five allows me to end my career here and retire from here, I would like to retire from Madison District and then work at Home Depot after I retire. So, at twenty twenty-five, will give me thirty years, would give me thirty years in the public school sector, and I would like to retire from Madison District Public Schools.
Do you like to buy some years?
I, I bought five years in two thousand one.
I'm just, I'm just.
No, I mean, no, literally, in two, and, and when you first start teaching, they don't do that anymore, you were allowed to purchase universal years. Two thousand two, I purchased five universal years towards my retirement. So yes, although I won't have thirty years, you know, physically working, I will have my twenty-five years working. I started in oh-one, Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
All right, anybody else?
This just gives you the ability to retire in twenty-five, that doesn't mean that you are going to retire in twenty-five.
Have you seen all the gray hair I've acquired over the last few years? I've, I've acquired a lot of gray hairs, and I would like to retire while I have my sanity intact, so.
Too late. If, if anything, it shows our commitment to the superintendent and that he's wanted here. That simple. At least that's my opinion.
I agree.
Now, is there anybody else, or do we do a vote? Nope, okay, Sarah, roll call vote.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
No.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
I'm going to vote no because I am uninformed and did not get the contract in time before the meeting, I vote no.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
All right, now we're on item seven, Mr. Abdullah Had.
I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw, um, item seven from the agenda, Mr. Kimball.
All right. And that leaves us with office reports, do we have any? I don't think we do. No? All right, let's go to board comments, then, let's start with Ms. Scott, go ahead.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Kimball, I'm always first, I love it, thank you. Okay, um, I apologize to our community that this board wasn't completely and always transparent, didn't always follow board policies and bylaws, didn't respect our students and parents, I'm sorry that this board blamed the past board on our own bad practices. I apologize to our community that this board did not provide the superintendent the goals and visions that this district deserves. I'm sorry for every email or phone call that may have been missed and or didn't give a response to what you were looking for, your questions or concerns. I want to thank a board member, Mr. Pittman, for serving as a Board of Education member for nine years, for being a softball coach to kids, volunteering of his time at several events, and donating his own Board of Education money to the PTO for our students. Thank you to your and your family, Mr. Pittman, for your commitment and the love for the students and this community. Bill, I want you to know that we, the parents, students, and staff will miss you greatly. Thank you for always standing up for the community's civil rights and mine, I appreciate it. Thank you for all of your service, remember, once an eagle, always an eagle. To the parents, students, and staff, I know twenty twenty has been extremely rough, thank you for that all you have continued to do and are still doing, happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go with, uh, Mr. Holcomb, go ahead.
Um, Angel, congratulations. Um, I'm happy that you're gonna be here, uh, you're doing a great job. Um, Barb, I'm gonna miss you, you're, you're, you're solid. Marth, thank you for, for, uh, bringing things to the head. And Bill, thank you for your devotion to the students and just people in the city. And thank, thank the parents for being here today, and I guess that's about all.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Castle, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody that participated in our meeting, that came to our meeting tonight, I should say, we have like forty-nine or fifty people that came to our meeting tonight and sat for an hour and a half while we went into closed session, I appreciate you still hanging in there. I want to personally thank Mr. Beaver and Mr. Smith for coming to the podium, it's never easy to come and tell us good or bad about what's, what's on your mind, but it's always appreciated. I can't say enough about our superintendent and his staff, these have been really trying times, and thank you for everything you've done for this district, we wouldn't be where we were without you guys, the teachers, everybody that is a part of this, and you know who you are, you know who you are. And it was an honor to serve on this board, I'm gonna miss every, everybody that I've worked with, um, I, I know we didn't always see eye to eye on everything, I wish we could have, I wish we could have been more cohesive. And I want to thank Bill Pittman and Mr. Mark Kimball for their service on this board, you guys have been on the board a long time, both of you. And you've taken a lot, and you've given a lot back, so thank you all very much, and I wish you all continued safety and please stay away from the virus if you can avoid it. And take, keep your families safe and happy holidays, and I wish, I hope next year's better for everybody, thank you.
Mrs. Thompson?
Hi, um, first of all, I want to congratulate Edwina for getting your contract approved, Mr. Abdullah Had, getting your contract approved. I want to tell everybody have a happy holiday, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving, but I want everybody to stay safe from COVID. I would like to share that I have enjoyed working with this board. Ms. Castle, we're sure gonna miss your input. She's worked very hard with me as treasurer, and so has Mrs. Ott. And Mrs. Ott and I are gonna move forward as we continued to do all along. Mr. Kimball, we're gonna miss you, Mr. Pittman, we're gonna miss you. But most of all, we want to move forward and get this district back in order, it was a mess when we got here, and we're doing our best to pull it out. Happy holidays, everybody, that's all.
Uh, Mrs. Ott?
Okay, I just want to thank the teachers and the staff, as Mr. Beaver said, for, for helping the students thrive during this, this terrible time. Kudos to Jamie and for bringing the CARES program to the staff and their, their defendants. And for Kat for obtaining and being awarded the grant for the food service. Um, and we are truly blessed to have Mr. Abdullah Had and Dr. Hill in our midst, and I'm glad that contracts were renewed, extended, whatever. And just for everyone to be safe, to the outgoing board members, thank you for your service, and, um, just happy holidays to everybody, stay safe.
All right, that leaves me last.
I'll go first, Mark.
Oh, go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
Unless.
Picture's out of my screen, so.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that, go ahead.
So, uh, being that this is my last of many regular board meetings through the years and special meetings, uh, probably the last time that I'll have the opportunity to make, to address everyone, and I probably should have written something down. And, uh, you know, they say that, I guess the song is, breaking up is hard to do, this isn't hard, I just, it's time. I don't agree with a lot of things that are going on, and I don't have to agree with anything that's going on really anymore. I know we've had a lot of good times through these years, we've had some bad times, and somehow Madison is always, Madison District has always found a way to crawl out of those bad times, and, uh, it, it really is time for me to just move on, I have no, I have a peace of mind that I, I, you know, I fought for the kids, I fought for the staff, I fought with the board. But it, it really is, it's time, and I really have no bad feelings. Um, I know I have a couple obligations still with, to the district for the rest of the month here, and I will still be me through this month, but after this, after the end of the year, I'm done, I'm, my affiliation with Madison District is done, I'm not, I won't step foot in the buildings again, I won't, I'm done. I've been in part of the Madison District, believe it or not, since nineteen sixty-seven, that's fifty-three years, and, uh, I'm done. I hope the district, uh, pulls through all this and then gets back to where they can be, but they're gonna have to do it without Bill Pittman, the, the, the public has spoke, spoken, they don't want me. I'll go. And Mr. Smith can go crack his bubbly because Bill Pittman is moving on. That's it.
All right, last one at least, um, I would certainly like to thank, uh, Mr. Smith, and especially Mr. Beaver for the positive input, it's very important that we hear that. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, the staff, the teachers. Uh, especially, I'm especially pleased that Edwina is staying and has a, a longer contract, and I thank all the other board members for their service and for stepping up. And I certainly want to thank Mr. Abdullah Had, because without him, I think this district would have been closed already. And he has the heart and puts in a hundred and ten percent to this district. And, uh, I'm gonna miss working with him, but, uh, like Mr. Pittman said, I've got other endeavors and frankly need a break from this. So, that's all I got to say, uh, you know, everyone stay safe, COVID, and happy holidays. And that's it. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ott, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, everyone.
Our, our next meeting is the fourteenth, Mr. Abdullah Had?
December fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay, meeting adjourned.